Tell me when you're ready, Channel 18. Okay. Good evening, folks. I'd like to open again the August 17th, 2020 Barrow-Harwich Board of Selectments meeting. We did officially open the meeting at 6:00 this evening and then went into executive session in which we discussed a strategy for negotiations for our interim town administrators' contract. We've had those discussions, had some follow-up, which we will attend to. We then closed that executive session and went, have now gone back to open meeting for this board of selectments meeting. Let me remind those listening, or I guess you are way on, but if you're on, go to me and you've used the code on the agenda. If you're on phone, you use the phone number. I drew up some names of people who wish to speak. When we address an agenda item and the board members have had a chance to speak to it, I will try to remember to open it up for virtual audience participation. If I fail to do that, call or raise your hand and we'll catch up with you. With that, I would like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a weekly briefing, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it right over to our Health Director, Megan Eldridge, for her latest updates.
Hello, Megan.
Hi, Larry. How are you guys tonight?
We're fine, thank you.
Good. So, thanks for having Katie last week. I was able to get a day off, which was really nice. The cases in Harwich, since your update in your packet, which I did on Thursday, haven't changed. We haven't had any new cases since Thursday. We have had a reduction in the number of active cases, so we have 141 still confirmed positive cases, and now we're just tracking three active cases. One of those four active cases has returned to their home state, so they're no longer under our active surveillance any longer. I am receiving information from the state now for travelers. Since the travel order was put in place for the mandatory quarantining and mandatory telling the state who and when is traveling to Massachusetts from out of state, they compile that data and now it is transmitted to each town that the people are traveling to. So, that's new information as of Friday. We're now receiving all of the names and dates of travel for people that are coming from out of state. The state has said that we are not going to be the ones that need to do the follow-up on that. It's more for just our information if we're to get a complaint or something like that. So, that's very good. In the Commonwealth itself, we are seeing positive cases in the hundreds again. Yesterday, it was 300-plus, and today, it's 213 positives in Massachusetts. And we're seeing the hospitalizations going down and the ICU admittance going down, and it's really a function of the demographic that's getting tested now. We're seeing, most of the positives that we're seeing are people under the age of 40, and there are usually not as many underlying conditions, health conditions, in that demographic. So, we are seeing more positives, but we're not seeing the detrimental health effects that happened to the healthcare system. So, that's also very good as far as our opening plans go. Last week, we learned that the governors put Phase 3 Step 2 kind of on an indefinite hold for the next few weeks, and I think if our hospitalizations stay low and our ICUs stay low, we'll have a good chance of moving on to the next step in this phase in the next few weeks. Other updates, the clinic that we held at the community center on the 4th, we did get the results, and that one positive case that came about from that clinic was a resident of the Town of Wellfleet. So, even though we held the clinic here, we only had one positive, and it wasn't from our town, so that's also very promising. And then, one last update for you is the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow night virtually. Work session starts at 6:30, and something that's important on that meeting is they are voting and discussing to vote an amendment to the emergency facial covering order. That facial covering order right now stands for the area between Bang Street and Lower County Road on Route 28, and they are looking to amend the order to include the grounds of town meeting. So, even though you can social distance on your way in and out of town meeting, in September, when we do our annual town meeting, the order will state that everyone must wear facial covering until they're seated at their seat, and once they're seated with their family member, or if they're by themselves or with other people in their household, they can take their facial covering off once they're seated. And once they get up to speak, or they go to the bathroom, or they go to leave, that's when they'd have to put their facial covering back on. So, that is an amendment that the Board of Health is discussing tomorrow night, and that's my update.
Thank you, Megan, and I appreciate the Board of Health considering some of our concerns at the town meeting. I know, Joe and I met with others, we spent time with how to handle crowds walking in and out and protecting, and then face masks came up. So, we're taking all the steps we can to protect ourselves and still have a fairly full warrant at town meetings. So, thanks for your help on that.
Sure. And there will be accommodations for people that have medical issues and are not able to wear a mask. We would just ask that they contact us ahead of time so we can make special accommodations if possible. We'll definitely make those accommodations on the site if there's no notification prior, but the more we know ahead of time, the more we are able to accommodate those people that can't wear masks for medical exemption.
Thank you, Megan. Joe, back to you. Excuse me, Ed, you wanted to...
Yeah, Megan, you mentioned that the governors has put off Phase 3 Section 2, or whatever it is. What are the hallmarks that would be allowed in that next?
They haven't actually told us what Phase 3 Step 2 entails. I imagine it's more on the spectator events, the sports, and possibly some more classes or education things that people may be able to gather for, but at this point, Phase 3 Step 2 is an unknown.
Okay. All right. And I guess you sent me a note over the week answering the question I had last week, and that was a very good explanation, very clear. And I guess if we can be that clear, when the inspectors are giving the explanation to the operators, and if the operators can be that clear when they've been asked by the public, then we probably wouldn't have the question or the complaint made because it makes perfect sense.
Anyone else? Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
Sure, nothing more to add, Mr. Chairman. So, at this point, I turn it over to Cindy Williams for her update from the business community.
Hello, Cindy.
Good evening, everyone. Just, everyone's still moving ahead. Great weekend this weekend, even though the weather wasn't stellar, the businesses loved the rainy weekend, so pleased to see that. The parking lockdown at the Chamber was hopping, so businesses are doing well. Accommodations are still steady with the different forms of accommodations, whether inns, hotels, or summer rentals with the housing, so that's all great. And then, beach stickers, we're just seeing upstate New York and Massachusetts, so that's continuing to be the norm for us. Steady sales there. Sunday and Monday seems to be the big sticker day. And then, that's really all, and I'll have more exciting announcements next week.
Thank you, Cindy. Joe, that's it. I'll move on to public comments. I have a couple. One is, I notice when I look at the screen, we look sort of barren up here because we're missing two of our selectmen. They did, Don and Steve were here on remote video for their executive session, so we had a full board, and right now, Don had to bail out to nurses, replace knee, and Steve is babysitting, welcoming new grandson, so I think he's on, but he kind of comes and goes. So, we congratulate Steve and hope the best for Don. He'll probably be running marathons, I assume, in a week or two. The other comment I'd make is that, reading the paper, I'm envious of the police departments. A lot of them got to meet Bobby Orr during the past weekend. I guess Bobby Orr was around giving his regards to what a great job policemen do. So, good news to have someone that famous in town and recognize the good work of our police. My third comment is, Ed mentioned it last week, there was an article in The Chronicle this week about people unfortunately tearing down signs. We see that in Harwich, and I promise at least one of the residents that would make our, and I know the other selectmen share our view, that this is unacceptable. There's no reason at all to tear down campaign signs, and it's unfortunate because it's also not, they seem to be oriented towards one political party here, but if you watch, according to the paper, it goes on the other side, too. It goes on both sides. So, I just want to reemphasize that, in whatever we can do to set the stage as residents to show our dissatisfaction, distaste for anyone trying to interfere with the political signage and process. So, I just wanted to reinforce what you said last week, it was in the paper, and I guess we'll repeat that. I know they've been reported to the police, but I gather it's hard to catch someone at 1:00 in the morning doing, it was, not only personal property damage. So, we hope everyone else helps out on that regard. Anyone else for a public comment?
Thank you for that.
Thank you for starting that. We'll go on next to, we don't have, we have no public hearings or presentations, so next on your agenda is the non-resident taxpayer video. Let me introduce this just very briefly. We do this, have a non-resident taxpayers' meeting once a year, an annual meeting, which lasts, I think, about three hours when we do it at one go. Jamie from Channel 18 and Caleb and the department heads have spent time putting this together. I wanted to be sure we showed this because not only do I want to recognize all the good and hard work our department heads do in our departments, in the past, I found that meeting to be one of our most popular with our, not only our non-resident taxpayers, but our residents, because it may be the best update we have during the year of actually what our departments are doing. And so, our plan is to show, I think, about a third of those videos now, and then we'll stretch it out during the next two meetings. I also remind you that if you know of anyone who has an interest and they missed this, at some point, Jamie will stream these live on, or stream these, I guess you can't stream live, right? But we'll stream these on Channel 18. So, Jamie, the floor is yours.
Hello, and welcome to the annual non-resident taxpayer meeting. I'm Jamie Goodwin, and I am your Channel 18 station manager. I would like to start off by letting you know a few ways to watch our station. If you are in Harwich and you are subscribed to Comcast, you can tune into Channel 18. If you are elsewhere, or you would like to watch via the internet, you can navigate to the town's website, and on the bottom left-hand side, there is a button that says Channel 18. You can click the livestream link, you can watch our in-house, on-demand video server, or you could access us through YouTube at youtube.com/HarwichChannel18. In the future, we have some warrant articles on this year's annual town meeting, which will help improve our audio and visual capabilities in the Griffin Room at Town Hall. Additionally, we are looking to upgrade our playback servers, and this would help others view programming in the future on Apple TV and Roku devices. The town is currently negotiating a new 10-year contract with Comcast. This will allow us to continue to make station improvements through the use of cable franchise fees. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions or comments, you can always email me or call me at the contact information on the screen. And without further ado, I will turn it over to my fellow department heads. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Coppola. I am the Finance Director for the Town of Harwich. As the Finance Director, I'm responsible to manage all of the funds of the town, which includes about 110 funds, the largest one being the General Fund or the Operating Budget. The Operating Budget is the fund where salaries and wages are paid from, for departmental employees, which include Department of Public Works, Public Safety, and other Departments of Administration and such. This year, or the year that we're just finalizing, which was fiscal year 2020, we came in, revenues came in about $69,500,000, where expenses came in $68,100,000. The town is audited annually by an independent audit firm. That's scheduled for the last week of August, and it typically lasts about a week. And then, we prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. That financial report is reviewed by an outside organization. It is the Government Finance Officers Association, and the association reviews that report for completeness, accuracy, and then issues a certificate of award, which the town has received annually since fiscal year 2017. The town recently received an increase in the bond rating for the town. The town is now categorized as a AAA bond-rated community, and that's significant because that allows the town to realize lower interest rates when they go out to the bond market to sell bonds for capital projects. Some of the capital projects the town is undertaking right now is the building of a fire station. That's Fire Station 2 in East Harwich. In addition to that, there's significant wastewater projects that are occurring through the town right now. In fiscal year 20, the town refunded some bonds for the police station. The realized savings from that is $500,000 in interest costs over the remaining life of the bond. FY '20 was a very interesting year. We were challenged with a tornado in the Town of Harwich, and then, of course, we're all challenged currently with COVID-19. For the tornado, the state appropriated a supplemental bill that allowed the town to apply for $1.1 million in funding, which we received. The expenses associated that with the tornado thus far were about $850,000, so that leaves a remaining $300,000 for the board of selectmen to decide how they would like to spend that money. For COVID-19, the town has been fortunate enough to have some federal funding to support the cost for PPE, for additional firefighters to support COVID-19 safety, for beach monitors, and for the sanitation and disinfectant of buildings that the public is using and town employees are using as well. We are currently in the process of applying for CARES Act funding and FEMA funding to support those costs. The annual budget for FY '21 is currently under review and completion. The annual town meeting this year is scheduled right now for September 26th to be held at Montemoy Regional School District, the football field. That meeting will allow the town to appropriate funds for fiscal year 21, and while this is a different year because typically we have a budget in place before the fiscal year begins on July 1st, this year, we were responsible for preparing monthly budgets, or monthly spending plans, as directed by the Department of Revenue. The monthly spending plans for the Town of Harwich have been prepared for July through October, and they're reviewed, submitted and reviewed to the Department of Revenue for their approval. We expect the annual town meeting to appropriate funds for the complete fiscal year, and look forward to any of your questions that you may have. Please feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you.
Hello, from the Health Department. My name's Megan Eldridge. I'm the Health Director, and I am here to tell you a little bit about what the Health Department and Board of Health does for you in Harwich. There's quite a few things we do on a daily basis to keep everyone healthy and safe. The first thing I want to mention is we do water quality testing on all of our public and semi-public beaches, and you can feel safe swimming. We test them this year on Thursdays, and if anything's wrong, we promptly close the beach, and thankfully, the last few years, we haven't had any closures. Our beach water quality is very good. We also perform food inspections and license all of the food establishments in town. We go through their paperwork, make sure everyone's certified in food safety, and we do inspections routinely as well as respond to complaints. We do foodborne illness investigations and follow-ups. We also provide a lot of educational seminars to our food service workers, so they are all up to date on the most recent codes. The Board of Health last year did update our tobacco control regulations, and they are in line with the state regulations now of 21 and over for sales, and flavored tobacco products are not allowed to be sold in convenience stores and gas stations. Those flavored products must only be sold in adult-only retail stores now. Other things the Health Department is responsible for are licensing and inspecting recreational camps for children. We do housing complaints and nuisance abatement investigations. So, if you're looking for help on who to call if your neighbor has trash issues or complaining about a housing situation that you live in, you would contact us at the Health Department. We also inspect and license semi-public swimming pools. Those are the pools at the condominiums and motels and hotels, make sure that they are safe and clean for our visitors. We also monitor our ponds for harmful algae blooms in conjunction with our Natural Resource Officer and Conservation Agent. We make sure that anything that looks suspicious gets posted for a algae bloom advisory. Something else is the septic permit program, Title V. If you need a copy of your septic permit or As-Belt, if you're looking to get your septic system pumped, we have that information. The best way to ask for it is to email Health Department and ask us for a copy of your As-Belt, and we can email that right back to you. We do also assist with the sewer project. We are currently in Phase 2 of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, and East Harwich Sewer System is under construction, and so far, we are on schedule to connect to the Chatham Treatment Plant. We also are very much involved in any building permit review. If you're looking to do any additions or alterations, or even build a deck, you would contact the Building Department, and your permit would be routed through the Health Department to make sure it meets all of our standards as well. Something that we also do is communicable disease surveillance, and right now, as we're in a global pandemic with the coronavirus, we are in the forefront for emergency management of that situation. The Board of Health recently enacted an emergency order for masks or face coverings to be worn in the area of Route 28 between Bang Street and Lower County Road, and even if you're able to social distance in that area, you are still required to wear your face covering. Face coverings are required in other areas of town if you are not able to social distance. They're always required inside our stores, grocery stores, pharmacies, and other businesses. We ask that you protect our residents and workers by wearing your face covering. We have also been highly involved in workplace safety standards for not only the town buildings, but also businesses throughout town to make sure they're complying with our state requirements of compliance with hand hygiene, staying home if you're sick, and making sure that their business is safe for visitors. We have extra enforcement on our beaches right now with some extra people there to make sure that people are social distancing and wearing their masks when they need to. We also have a compliance officer that is part of Barnstable County that comes to Harwich on a weekly basis to do some education and complaint follow-up for COVID complaints. We do ask that you comply with all of the COVID requirements for traveling, and if you have any questions about isolation or quarantine needs, visit our website as well as the mass.gov website. Those places have the most up-to-date information on COVID, and if you're interested in town-specific COVID numbers, we do a weekly briefing at the Board of Selectments meetings on Monday nights, and also, we provide a weekly written update on our website, and we provide current numbers of cases as well as the number of active cases. So, I want to thank you for listening, and as always, give us a call or email if you have questions. Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Emily Mitchell, and I'm the Council on Aging Director for the Town of Harwich. I'm excited to share with you some of the programs and services we have going on, both in ordinary circumstances and specific to COVID-19. Our mission at the COA is to support and advocate for older adults, their families, and caregivers. In ordinary times, we host onsite programs in areas like nutrition, education, fitness, health and wellness, special interest groups, and just generally opportunities to socialize and build relationships. We also work with folks in the community to put services in place, refer them to outside agencies for higher levels of care, and to plan for current and future needs. With the onset of COVID-19, we've really had to overhaul everything that we do. We couldn't host our programs onsite, so we've switched to a community-based model. Some of the biggest programs that we've done are our lunch distribution program. So, with the help of our fabulous town chef, Linda St. Pierre, we're now putting out about 65 meals per day. She prepares meals that are cold and shelf-stable. We have a group of volunteers who deliver these meals every day with a no-contact method, so they make sure folks are home, leave the meal, and everyone is safe. So, we're up to about 300 meals per week, which is really incredible, so we're very thankful to Linda and the volunteers for making that possible. We're also doing grocery and pharmacy support. We've partnered with the Family Pantry to both place orders that they fill, and then we pick up with staff or volunteers and deliver, again with a no-contact method. They've provided us with food that we can keep onsite and get to people immediately when they call and they need staple items, and we've even had staff and volunteers go to grocery stores, pick up food, and bring it to folks at home. We're doing similar things with medications. As long as there's no copay and it's not a special medication, we can have folks go to pharmacies, pick up the medication, and bring that to folks at home as well. We're also distributing masks to seniors, to caregivers of seniors, and to any family members who live with seniors. So, really, we're trying to prioritize kind of the most core, essential needs for folks in the community. But as this has kind of grown longer, we're looking to bring back... But as this has kind of grown longer, we're looking to bring back some of the fun things we do at the COA. So we're exploring options for at-home programming. We've done an indoor vegetable gardening kit where we've brought kind of everything you need to do a gardening project right in your home. We're giving you the growing bag, the seeds, the soil, the instructions, kind of everything you'd need to do that to grow some of your own produce and to just do something that's enjoyable. We're bringing people fitness equipment so that they can participate either with remote programming that we're organizing, or if they find a fitness class that they like online. We're putting together activity kits just with things that keep you entertained, occupy the mind a little bit as people go a little stir-crazy staying in their home for such an extended period of time. And we're really actively working now towards more remote programming opportunities. We're trying to use Zoom as a platform so that instructors can teach classes and people can participate in real time. We've had great luck working with Channel 18 to put programming on cable access, and we're looking to expand on that. One of our biggest focuses for this program is to build capacity, so make sure people have access to the technology and the knowledge and skills to use it so that they can fully participate, and we're really excited about that. We are currently in a little bit more of an expanded reopening. We are now open to the public by appointment only. We're setting appointments with staff, and we're building one-on-one programs with elder attorneys for, we did some tax appointments before the tax deadline. We're hoping to bring back the health insurance counselors and podiatry care in the next couple of weeks. We're also available for durable medical equipment distribution, and we'll be paying attention to health indicators and guidance from the town, state, and federal government and other aging agencies to consider bringing back small groups when it's safe to do so. So really, we just want to let you know that we're still here. I believe my contact information, both email and phone number, is on the screen. If you have any questions, if you know anyone who would benefit from any of the services or programs that I've mentioned, or if you just want to call and say hi and let us know how you're doing, we really, really would love to hear from you. We're here, we're counting down the days until we can see you in person again, and we hope to serve you to the very best of our ability in the interim. So thank you, and call anytime.
Good morning. My name's Dave LeBlanc. I'm the Fire Chief of the Town of Harwich. It's my privilege to be here today presenting to you as the new Fire Chief. On July 17th, 2020, Chief Norman Clark retired after 43 years of service to the town. Chief Clark spent a career building on the work of the chiefs before him to make the Fire Department what you see today. On July 17th, the department did a time-honored tradition of having a last-day coffee for the chief, and then we were able to celebrate his last day by escorting him home in the 1927 Maxim owned by the Harwich Fire Association, the Harwich's first official fire engine. We had a parade through town and celebrated his efforts and his commitment. The following day, we had a change-of-command ceremony where I was sworn as chief, and we sworn the new deputy, captain, and lieutenant. And when you make a new chief from within, which the selectmen chose to do this time, everybody moves up. So it's a great day for the department, it's a great day for the town, and we're very proud of the efforts of everybody in the department going forward. One of the other great things that I have that's taken over for Chief Clark is having been the deputy for the past five years is I know the condition the department's in, I know the shape we're in going forward, and it's not a lot of change required. We can just build on the work that's already been done. Your Fire Department has a fleet, a modern fleet apparatus that's all in good condition, a brand-new firehouse in East Harwich that Chief Clark was a project manager for, and we stand today ready and capable to serve the needs of the community to the best of our ability, and we're on good footing going forward. And that's not to say there hasn't been some challenges. 2019 and early 2020 have been very challenging for both the town and the department. We started last summer out with a gasoline tanker rollover at the Shaw's and then went right into a tornado a week later. This spring, obviously, like everybody, we've been dealing with the COVID virus, and that had some significant impact on the department, both on how we operate. And ironically, it reduced the number of calls that we had for the period of time when the surge was the greatest in Massachusetts. That decrease in runs we've seen has now gone away, and we're back to operating as we normally would. But there was definitely a period of time where people were uncomfortable about going to the hospital, uncomfortable about contact, and we had a significant decrease. It changed how our personnel operate, it changed every aspect of what we do, our contact with people outside the department. People had to wear masks, even on calls that were non-medical-related. Medical calls, they're wearing masks, gowns, face coverings. So it was a significant impact to the department, but we worked through it, and we have great men and women working with the Harwich Fire Department, and they were able to adapt to the changes and still are adapting. Travel ban that just came out from the governor, you know, affects potential travel plans for them and their future, and we're continuing to adapt as those changes come. We finished the 2019 calendar year at 4,863 total incidents. That was a slight decrease from the year before, which represented a significant increase from that prior year. So plus or minus, there's always a change in more runs, less runs, but we usually consistently stay right around the 5,000 mark or have for the past few years. The majority of those, or 3,500 of those, are EMS-related. Because we bill for the ambulance, that generates a significant amount of revenue, and this year, we generated about $1.7 million in ambulance receipts. And some of that was from a program the department did for the first time this year called the CPE Program through the state, and allows us to recover expenses that are not covered by Medicare or Medicaid reimbursement. So this year, that amount was $123,000, and we expect about $150,000 for FY20, which is, again, just, it helps with the budget problems that we're going into. Additional sources, last year, we were awarded a federal grant for some automobile extrication equipment. So these are the jaws of life that everybody hears about. Also, some extrication struts, a vehicle rolls over, we need to stabilize it, and these struts are critical for making the environment safe so we can get the patient out and also protect the first responders that are working on the scene. That equipment was worth over $60,000 in federal money, and it was also $15,000 in training money that was included in that grant. We're just about completed with the grant. We expect to finish it up in the next month. It closes out in September. And the remaining money that'll be left will be used to buy some much-needed PPE for the firefighters, which will be an additional savings to the budget because we can take that money that's in the budget out because we'll be able to use the grant money for that. Additionally, this year, and we, last year, we amended the capital plan to change our vehicle replacement. We were in line for an engine replacement. We decided to combine that with a ladder for a truck that's called a Quint. It does the purposes of both an engine and a ladder. That was scheduled to be on this year's town meeting, was delayed because of COVID, and we anticipate that it'll be delayed further because of the uncertainty in the budget that we're facing. The good news is that the vehicles that we have are serviceable, and we have good DPW maintenance staff that will continue to make them operational. So we don't see it as being a huge problem, although it does need to be addressed at some point. So as I sit here, as your new Fire Chief, we are in good shape. The department's in good shape going forward, and if anybody ever has any questions, my contact information is provided. Please feel free to reach out and let me know your concerns. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dave Gilmet. I'm the Chief of Police in the Town of Harwich here, and I'm here tonight to give you a quick rundown of our Police Department, touch on a few things. Obviously, you can't touch on everything, but just a few things. But I thought it would be appropriate to start out tonight by reading our mission statement. I'm not sure how many of you have seen it. It's posted throughout our building and in our lobby, and I think it gets to the essence of who we are and what we do, so I just want to read it to you. "The members of the Harwich Police Department believe in making a positive difference in our community by providing legitimate and equitable law enforcement with a strong focus on active community engagement and community service. Our primary concern is the health, well-being, and safety of all those we serve." And then we have a little four bullets down here that say, "In order to honor our core values and preserve public trust, we will always do the right thing, be truthful in all matters, practice empathy with those we encounter, and strive for excellence through knowledge and training." So that's our mission statement, and I think it gets to the essence of who we are and why we do what we do. Let me give you a rundown of our, a quick rundown of our Police Department as it is right now. We have 35 full-time officers, including myself, and that breaks down to myself, my Deputy Chief, two lieutenants, five sergeants, and 26 police officers. Also included, employed by the Harwich Police Department, are five civilian dispatchers and two civilians, a records clerk, and my administrative assistant. We also have five special police officers, but they do not work the road like a full-time officer. They mostly do traffic work on details, assist us with filling those details. As far as staffing goes, we're currently down one full-time police officer and one full-time dispatcher. This has not created a serious issue at this point, but eventually, we would obviously look to fill those positions and come up to full staffing. Thankfully, up to this point, we have had no employees come down with COVID-19, so we have not been impacted by that to any great extent. We've had a number tested, and thankfully, they were all negative, but that has not impacted our operations up to this point. So the past few months, as you are all aware, has been very challenging for everyone and the Police Department as well, but I'm very proud to report that our officers have risen to that challenge, and they continue to do their job and serve this community with honor and integrity, and I'm extremely proud of each and every one of them. So as far as calls for service go, this year, this summer, I looked at the numbers from May, June, and July, and we're down about 1,500 calls this year, and that's attributable to the COVID, you know, lockdown and limitations associated with that. So calls for service are down, but as things opened up and some visitors started to arrive, we did start seeing uptick in issues in the Harwich Port area, notably along the beaches, large gatherings of kids and underage drinking going on, some disturbances, boisterous behavior, as well as some issues related to the corridor, the business corridor at closing time, some open containers and some loud activity and groups gathering waiting for rides, et cetera. So in response to that, we've increased our presence down there in Harwich Port to try and to keep things under control, and we've increased our patrols along the beaches as well, and it seems to be having an impact. So that's how we're addressing that issue. I'd like to touch on a little bit. Harwich PD also has some special units that we can deploy depending on what the situation is, and those would include the mountain bikes that we have sometimes out on patrol. We've got two motorcycles and two certified riders for the motorcycles, and we also have two ATVs. And ATVs can come into play either along the beaches or for a search or something like that. So those are very useful units, and you may see them out and about throughout the year. I think another important piece to mention is that Harwich PD is a member of the Cape Cod Regional Law Enforcement Council, and that allows us access to regional assets that we, as a small department, would most likely not be able to have access to. Ordinarily, we wouldn't be able to afford to have these units that come in and assist us. And some examples of that are like the Crash Reconstruction Unit. They would reconstruct a serious or fatal motor vehicle crash for us. The Motor Unit, which consists of several motorcycles from all of the Cape towns that can come together for traffic issues and whatnot. We also have a newly-created search team that will assist any community on the Cape with locating a missing person, for example, that provide a lot of personnel and equipment to bear on that situation, which can be very nerve-wracking. And we also have the Special Weapons and Tactics Team. And just to note that Harwich Police has representation on all of these groups, and it's very, very good situation to be, to have access to those assets. So just to wrap it up, I'd just like to, just like to thank you for this time, and I wish you all a very happy and healthy and safe summer, and obviously, call us if you need us.
That ends our Department Non-Resident Videos. And again, Jamie, thank you very much for putting this together. We'll share some more Department information next week and remind you that what Jamie started out this, that for those who may have missed, if they can, view it on Channel 18 or YouTube. I think all the information's on our town website and how to get to it.
Correct.
Yeah, I get a correct from Jamie. I don't get correct from Jamie very often, so I appreciate that. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And Michael, you on to?
Yep. We move and approve the Consent Agenda as follows. A, adopt and sign primary election warrant for September 1st, 2020, state primary. B, vote to approve the resignation of Kathleen Tehin from the Harwich Cultural Council effective immediately.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Remind me of that. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Steve, are you on? We lost Steve, so it's three zip then, Joe. Next is New Business. Approve minutes for June 8th, 2020.
We approve the minutes for June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, I'll do a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Ed?
Aye.
Steve is on?
Larry, I'm here. I'm an aye.
You're an aye? Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
If I could, my eyes were good enough, I could read the screen and know you're on, but they're not.
Yeah, I was just muted, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is possible vote to waive building permit fees except plumbing, gas, and electric for construction offices and Brooks Free Library. Michael?
I move that we waive all building permit fees except plumbing, gas, and electric for the construction of three new offices at the Brooks Free Library, approximately Estimated application fee of $70, inspection fee, two at $75, and tech fee of $7.50.
Second.
Any discussion? Joe, you have a comment on this?
Just that this is a project that Ginny Hewitt is working with Sean Libby on. It's trying to create three offices, one on the first floor, excuse me, two on the first floor, one on the second floor, I believe, and that's to make sure that they have appropriate workspace when we open the building to the general public, so it is COVID-19-related, and we will be seeking reimbursement of that under the CARES Act. Costs are expected to be under $5,000.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. No further discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's four zero on this, Joe. Next on the agenda is the vote on the District of Goleen. Charlene, I guess I'll turn it over to you to give us some background. Let me, Charlene, before you speak, let me comment that I know we have several speakers tonight that wish to address this subject. My intent is to ask Charlene to speak to it, Jovi wishes to, other selectmen, and then open it up for public. And so right now, I think I have three folks who want to speak to this subject. I'll try to move through that order. Charlene, do you want to start?
Sure. Thank you this evening. I'm Charlene Greenhout, Town Planner. Also on is Sarah Kordjev, who is a planner with the Cape Cod Commission and has been instrumental in helping us with the draft that you see before you this evening. As a brief rundown, as you're aware, the town, through your board, did nominate the West Harwich Corridor, Route 28, from Dennisport to the Herring River as a district of critical planning concern or a DCPC. The Barnstable County Commissioners did approve the nomination, and it did become a county ordinance on Number 19-18 on December 4th, 2019. And from that date, the town does have one year to implement regulations or establish implementing regulations. As you may recall, we were, before COVID, we had planned to possibly have a special town meeting this September for the sole purposes of dealing with the West Harwich DCPC, but as we know, all that got a little messed But as we know, all that got a little messed up with the COVID emergency, and rightfully so. Things had to be pushed off. So I began working with the Cape Cod Commission staff in the spring to, and working with them actually for several months, to come up with the draft. The planning board has reviewed a couple of drafts. I do have an email list of over 70 folks who are interested in receiving updates on the DCPC. They received email updates as we had drafts available, as well as when we put information on the town website. There is a website for the DCPC directly on the Planning Department website, not the planning board, but the Planning Department website. So the planning board did review the latest draft, actually not the latest draft, there were a couple of changes made as a result of the meeting with the planning board last week. There were several folks on that meeting from the public, and Cape Cod Commission staff were also there. The document that you do have before you tonight is a culmination of all those meetings, all the input, and all the direction that we received from a variety of individuals. I'm not sure, you know, how detailed you want me to run through this, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to go through the different sections that are being created as part of this. We do believe, and from Cape Cod Commission staff, that this does meet the minimum requirements for the implementation regulations. The public who has attended and provided input seems pleased with the document. We actually lowered some thresholds that we had a little bit higher up, but based on conversations from the public, we decided that, no, let's lower those a little bit. As far as square footage, we went from a 6,000 square foot in the rear down to 3,000, and we also moved setbacks from 10 feet on the sideline to 20 feet, based on comments from the public in general. I did provide you with a timeline that if the selectmen are going to vote to sponsor this and approve the proposed bylaw for the West Harwich Special District and refer it to the planning board, that would then move forward, that the Cape Cod Commission would actually on September 3rd be reviewing and hopefully adopting the draft bylaw as consistent with implementing regulations stipulated in the DCPC designation. We would then be advertising this in the local paper on September 3rd and 10th, and we would be holding the necessary public hearing on September 22nd, with the town meeting then being on September 26th. Again, if you would like me to run through the particulars of the bylaw, I'm happy to do that. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer those. And on behalf of everybody involved in this, we hope that the board will vote to move this forward, and so that this can be on the September 26th special or regular town meeting. If not, then the selectmen, there would either need to be held a special town meeting sometime before December 4th, or the Cape Cod Commission can implement the, impose the regulatory implementing regulations themselves. I don't necessarily think that is the way that the town really wants to go. I would hope that we can move forward at this time. So I'm happy to go over particulars if you have any, or if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And also Sarah Kordjev is on the line. I don't know if you wanted to hear from her, but she is available to speak if need be.
Thank you, Charlene. Joe, do you have any, you have comments on this?
Nothing at this point.
I'll ask for rest of the board. I don't see a need to go through great detail because it's been discussed now in several public meetings. It's been well-reported in the press. Let me just, I know I got in some trouble by being called correctly, by the way, by the Chronicle, that we have some work to do to get it to town meeting. But Charlene, you feel comfortable? Our mission tonight is refer back to, just clarify, if we vote tonight, yes, we're voting both to refer back to the planning board, and we're voting on the, you've given us some suggested language. Are we voting on that language as well for the town warrant, or will you come back to us with that?
No, it would not. So the recommended motion that I put in my memo to you is a motion to sponsor and approve the West Harwich Special District zoning bylaw and refer it to the planning board to begin the public hearing process and to include this zoning amendment within the town meeting warrant in September.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, you know, what if there's great concern during the public hearing process, and we've already decided to put this on the warrant? That's one, which I don't believe that there will be based on all the meetings that I've followed on this. It seems like we have great support on this, but what if the public comes out and during those public hearings?
Come back.
We know that there's going to be a long debate at town meeting, which brings me to my second point. We really haven't given a lot of, haven't had a lot of conversation about items that we want to put on the warrant versus not put on the warrant to try and make sure town meeting doesn't go too long. We have picked an outdoor venue, and though I think this is very important, I think it's worthy of having a public hearing first. And Joe, I guess I'd ask you, do we have time to go through that process, see how it goes, and then put it on the warrant? Or are we running out of time?
Yeah, as the planner, I put in our memo to the board, I agree with the recommendation that Charlene has presented with the recommended motion. If you don't do this, if you don't move this forward, we're going to have to call a special town meeting if we want to do it to meet the commission's deadlines. So I understand that it's a multi-part motion this evening. Charlene, if they refer it back to planning board tonight and then take action either tomorrow night or next week on the accept and adopt, does that mess up the timeline?
Well, we have to send this to the newspaper no later than next week for it to be in on the 3rd and the 10th of September. Keep in mind, you also have the multifamily bylaw on the town, on the warrant, and that public hearing is the same evening, September 22nd. The first legal notice can't be less than 14 days prior to the public hearing, and because we have our meetings on Tuesdays, it bumps it up to actually greater than 14 days, so we don't do anything statutorily incorrect in our publications, and we do publish in the Chronicle. So at this point, I mean, I really need to know sooner rather than later. And again, if the board decides it does not want it on this town meeting, they're either going to have to hold a special town meeting before December 4th. And, I mean, I hate to say it this way, but the ball's in the board of selectmen's court as to how they would like to proceed.
I'd be in favor of moving it on at this point, but Ed?
Yeah. I guess the concern being that at a public hearing, there's issues raised that need to be dealt with, which would materially change the proposal so we couldn't take action at town meeting, and in that case, the planning board would have to make some adjustments. And at the worst, we would wind up calling a special town meeting for some, before that date in December. I mean, you know, I think we ought to, whereas it, and there'd be additional expense to that, but for us to put it on the town warrant now, essentially, there's no particularly additional expense, and we can hope that the proposal is going to meet public muster. And if it doesn't, we'll push ahead and look at doing a special town meeting to prove it later on.
Michael and Steve?
By the way, I have no positive motions, right? So if there's a blow up at the public hearing, we just do a positive motion at town meeting.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, you know, first, Charlene and all those who worked on this, thanks so much. The packet was great, very extensive in all that you prepared, and really helps us to focus in on what we need to do here. I know that the general public sentiment here, as far as I can tell, is very strongly in favor of this, and based on the conversations that just took place, I think we should move ahead. I'm strongly in support of it.
I, Michael, go ahead, and I'll make my comment.
I was going to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we sponsor and approve the West Harwich Special District zoning bylaw and refer it to the planning board to begin the public hearing process and to include this zoning amendment within the town meeting warrant in September.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I know we have several people who wish to speak to this. You're welcome to, but I think the consensus is you're not going, you've already won your case, and so I'll leave it to you whether you want to reinforce that or let us vote.
Let's vote.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. If that's okay with the people who want to speak, I'll go, we'll vote on this, and Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So it's unanimous, we'll move it back, Charlene, to your committee, and we'll talk about it certainly at town meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for those who tuned in to speak, but I think sometimes less is more or more is less. I forget how that goes, but.
Thank you all.
We're moving ahead.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next on the agenda is, Joe, is your discussion point, I think, and Megan? Who wants to, Megan, Alif, I'm mumbling here now, but who's going to lead this charge?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to start the discussion on this. And you should have in front of you, hopefully you have in front of you the charter section that talks about reorganizations. It's a single page that has Section 5 from the charter, which is Section 5, Responsibilities for Administrative Reorganization, 451 and 452. As you may recall, at past meetings, I've talked about two task forces that I had established at the height of the pandemic that are still doing their work. The first was the Technology Task Force, and as you know, we're working on making sure that the town government can be remote more efficiently than we were the last time, or the first time we had to go into surge, remote working location. The second task force that I created was Health and Occupational Safety. And later this evening, you'll hear me announce that we have a new hire for a part-time inspector filling a vacancy in the Health Department. Having had conversations with our Health Director and having directed her to analyze the present makeup of the Health Department as it relates to the pandemic and going forward, you can see the memorandum that she's put in the packet at my request, and what we're looking for and what I support is a request from changing the part-time Health Inspector to a full-time position. I believe this is necessary to accommodate what we're finding now in the pandemic world, if you will, but also the expectation of what health departments throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the United States, I think quite frankly, will be tasked with as a result of the pandemic. So this is an effort to reorganize the Health Department to increase the part-time Health Inspector to a full-time Health Inspector. I will defer to the Health Director to go over her memorandum if the board has questions, but I am asking the board to support this reorganization.
Megan, do you have any follow-up to that?
I just, I wanted to clarify that this request is to add an additional person. So we have a part-time Health Inspector that we just hired, who will be appointed hopefully tonight and start on the 31st. And the proposal that I've put forward is to hire an additional full-time Health Inspector. So that's one full-time new member of the Health Department. That will bring us from 2.5 full-time equivalents to 3.5 full-time equivalents. And the Health Inspector position is an HEA position, whether it's part-time or full-time. However, the part-time position that we just currently filled is 19 hours a week with no benefits. We are requesting a reduction in the budget because the new person coming on is coming in at a lower step than the previous part-time Health Inspector, so we're looking at just under a $6,000 savings there. But I am looking to add a, one more position of full-time Health Inspector and HEA, step grade B10, and I put it in as a step two, knowing that it could possibly come in a little lower at a step one, and that increase is just over $56,000. And in asking for that, I am reducing the other purchase services line item, and that line item currently is funded at $6,900. And if we are able to hire an additional staff member, I could reduce that line item down to $2,500 with a savings of $4,400, because that line item is mostly used to outsource contractors to do test holes and inspections when we're overwhelmed. So we'd be able to reduce that line item. So just, just to be clear, one of the many proposals that I gave to Joe was to just increase the part-time to full-time, and that is kind of my last choice, but this is something that I think would benefit the department and the town itself to get another full-time person on board so we could fulfill our statutory needs as well as our brand-new COVID needs that definitely aren't going anywhere in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to try that again. Megan's absolutely correct. I was making, mixing up the various proposals that I've asked you to review, but I want to make it very clear that I support this recommendation, and not only that I stand behind Megan, but I ask Megan to analyze this, as I've said before, about the Health and Occupational Safety Task Force. So I recognize that we're doing an add to staff. I recognize that we're in tough financial straits. However, we also recognize that if we didn't have the support of the county for one day a week, I think our Health Department is going to be overburdened and taxed far beyond what they'll be able to do, not only during pandemic, but also in the hopeful future when we're past pandemic, but what I expect to be a heavily regulated environment, and we're going to need to rely upon additional inspectors. So I apologize for the confusion. I own the confusion, but Megan's absolutely right. It's an add to staff, additional full-time inspector.
Joe, could you just very briefly, again, I may have missed it, what, you've mentioned reorganization. What will the organization of the department look like when this is?
So I consider this to be a reorganization because it's an add to staff. It's changing what the Health Department looks like, and I imagine that that is something that would have to comport with the charter when it talks about changes to departments and all that. If the board has a different opinion on that, I'm fine with that, but I tried to labor under the expectation that the charter would bear upon this decision.
I just was trying to understand it. Michael?
My question was, one of my questions was answered, which was the part-time person that we just hired. I believe the conversation was at the time that Megan pushed for a full-time person and the board settled for a part-time person. So now we're asking to keep that, or one proposal here is to keep that one part-time person and hire a full-time person. Megan, when we talked during the budget hearings, I think it was in February, March, when we talked about cutting those line items in your budget originally, it was kind of presented by you that it was very detrimental to the department. So are we trying to make things look good here, and later this is going to come back? Because my recollection was it was going to hurt your department if we cut it, and it was a lower amount at that time.
We are, the things that I'm looking to take out of the budget is the advertising line item, which we don't need, which will not be detrimental if we reduce, and other purchase services, because we currently only use that to contract out for tests. and other purchase services, because we currently only use that to contract out for test holes. And it's much more expensive to have a contractor do our test holes than it would be to have our own staff members do it. Had, have, if we are able to, if we aren't able to add an additional staff member, then yes, I can't, I can't get rid of that line item or I can't reduce it that much. But adding another person will backfill all of those other needs that I was worried about not being able to fulfill.
Yeah, Michael, yeah, sure.
The timing on this, I guess, Megan, Joe, somebody, is this an immediate ask? Or is this a proposal or something for us to consider now for a slightly later decision?
So I wanted to have this come before the board, before you finalize budget matters and all of that. So recognizing that the charter calls for new positions to be appropriated, we would have to have action done at the fiscal '21 annual town meeting budget if we were to go forward on this. So the position itself doesn't require town meeting action, but the appropriation would be necessary. So just trying to get all of this done for fiscal year '21 with an eye towards '22 coming right after that. So the need, the need I feel is immediate, and the action would have to be soon because it impacts upon the proposed fiscal year '21 budget.
Ask your question, Michael, because we could put it on for.
Yeah, last, just last comment. Megan, I think you guys did great work on this, and I actually don't see that it's an over ask. I think I would, I would be more inclined to support doing away with a half a position and adding a full position. But I would certainly look at the full position. But Larry, I, you know, the next item on the agenda is a financial update.
Right.
And one thing that this board hasn't done is had a real snapshot of what the finances are gonna look like. We've gone from, I think, 5.7 to 4.3 to a million and a half, maybe. And the board's made no plan as to where we're gonna find that money yet. I know that we have a subcommittee that's working on it, but the full board hasn't seen anything yet. So I don't feel it would be responsible for me to vote in a new position right now without deciding what's gonna go first. And this might be more important than a lot of the other things that we'll have to consider. And it sounds like it, based on Joe's recommendation and your recommendation and the given pandemic. But for me to vote on this tonight, I would have to vote no. So I'm hoping that we'll get some more time and see what the town looks like and what our plan going forward is on our finances. That's all.
Thank you, Michael. I always forget to say that. So my, my view is, what I'd like to do is to at least go a little far tonight to agree that we want to put this in the budget to look at where it shakes out. Because we haven't seen the numbers yet, and it does keep changing. But unless we have, you know, we've asked the subcommittee, Steve was on that, to look at the options going forward of how we're going to, what we need, how we're gonna pay for it. So I'd like to at least get consensus to move this forward. To Michael, your point, to put it in the budget and see how it, how it looks. Does that, Michael, does that answer, because we have to do both. I see this as a, one of our critical positions for a couple of standpoints. One is safety, and the other one is, quite frankly, economics. We have a lot of businesses that depend on, you know, restaurants and all that depend on, I was gonna say it better than this, but for Health Department doing their job. I was trying to think of a more polite way of saying that, Megan, but you know, of doing that work, because if not, then they get held up and they can't do business. And so it needs to be, be done. So we've asked for a budget, we'll get some of that tonight, but if we can, and then, Michael, we can start sorting out what we can do and what we can't do in the real way. Ed, and then I'll go back.
Megan, can you just briefly review the areas of inspection, health services, whatever, this position will be covering?
Sure. So the, the part-time position that we're filling will cover most of the food service inspections and food service program that we're, we need to do. So the full-time position, if we're able to add a staff member, will not only do the soil tests that we contract out for right now, but they'll also be able to assist with the septic inspections and the permit reviews. Currently, our senior health agent is taking on all of that, and, and she's unable to do other jobs like wellness programs and epidemiology programs. So this middle person between the senior health agent and the part-time Health Inspector would be able to take on the community sanitation programs, like the swimming pools, the ponds, the swimming ponds and the algae blooms that we deal with, and housing inspections, nuisance complaints. And it will free up the senior health agent to deal with the bigger issues of COVID and sewer, the sewer project that we've kind of put on the back burner at the moment. And, and mostly being able to keep up with all of the building permits that we see on a day-to-day basis. We, we get probably five to 10 a day to review, and they take a lot of time.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, you know, in the past, there, we had a discussion, this goes back in a number of years, about doing health inspections or safety inspections of rental units. At the time, there was some pushback in town because it was believed the only reason we were proposing it is because of the short-term rental taxes that were being proposed by other towns on, on the Cape. Well, and so that was put, put off. It was seen if we had gotten the health or safety inspections in, it was sort of the nose under the tent issue onto instituting hotel tax on, on short-term rentals. Well, that's happened now. What hasn't happened, and which is actually part of the legislation that the state passed, is we still haven't, have no health or safety inspections of any of our rental units in town, particularly in no organized fashion. And I believe that that is something that we should still push ahead with. I don't expect that this additional one body would be able to be sufficient to enact, to do a program like that. But certainly, it may provide enough time in the department to take a look at that and come up potentially with a proposal on what it would take to get that off the ground. But I think it's, you know, we regulate and we inspect all sorts of businesses on their safety, health and safety aspects, so the public's protected. But these types of businesses are flying under the radar at this point, and they should be brought into compliance.
Thank you, Ed.
No, Steve.
Well, it's either, it's hard to tell without picture whether he's gone or whether he's muted. Joe, let me, let me ask you, to the discussion we've had so far, how do we step through this? I think we're fairly inclined, but wanna be sure it fits within our budget. Do we sit on this and keep this as a, as a high priority and see how the, how the budget looks? Or what's the best way of moving forward?
Well, I think Selectman McCaskill was spot on earlier. I think first we wanted, I wanted to get this to you as quickly as we could. Megan's been doing the work on this, and this was the soonest I could get it in front of you. So I wanted you to be aware of it, that there's a need for it. But I think it's appropriate to tie it into the discussions you're gonna have next and potentially take action either tonight or next week. But it is all tied together, and it is a need.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Dana?
Dana?
Yeah, I have at least one idea on funding it. We're gonna talk about it Friday night. If you could, if I could get the exact figures from Joe as to what's the cost and what would come out of the different line items to offset it. I think I have at least one thing to talk about with the Finance Committee on Friday as a possible way to do this.
We can work that out and send it along for sure.
Okay. So Megan, thank you for that. I think where we are is we realize the importance of what you're asking, but just sort out the budget where we, as we go forward, and hopefully we'll move ahead on this.
I understand. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is a financial update, and I think Carol is, she's not here, right?
She's on the screen, I believe.
I'm here, everyone.
Thank you for the budget.
There you are.
Hi, Carol, there you are, in person, not the video. I kept wanting to ask you questions before, but we won't do that. Good seeing you.
Nice to see everyone.
Each time you, you know, prepare this and businesses are picking up and stuff, our estimate looks a little better, but we're still short.
We are still short.
We're still short.
I did hear from a number of departments, or Joe and I did hear from a number of departments that were willing to take further reductions in their budgets. Those included the Police Department, and I can go over the areas if you're interested, or I can send this information to you. So it was the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, Brooks Library, the Community Center, the Golf Department. Council on Aging had some reductions, and they had some requests for increases as well. We had an area that the board had signed a contract for the sealers of weights and measures, and that was not budgeted, so that was increased here. And then the Conservation Department had some requests for some additional expenses that they thought that were absolutely necessary. Based on the governor's orders and talking to, you know, folks in the community, while we may be seeing Massachusetts residents visiting that maybe weren't as expected, we also are seeing limited capacity in the hotels and motels and inns. So I did reduce revenue to reflect the hotel motel tax, maybe the more accurate information that we received. And then there's a couple of other things that the board may want to contemplate with the Golf Committee and Waterways Committee. To use some of their receipts reserve fund to, and I've spoken to both of them, actually, Roman is the one that brought it up initially to me as an offer, I guess I'll say, to offer to help pay down some of their, pay off some of their debt instead of raising it in taxes, to raise it, to bring funds in from the Receipts Reserve Fund. I had a conversation with the Harbor Master today, and we talked about the same. And certainly, they are both willing to help the town. So with that said, those are the changes that have been made thus far in this round, as well as the reduction in Montemoy Regional School District. They had voted a new budget, and I received that information last week. I met with Mr. Powers last week, and we reviewed the information, and I sent it along to him on Wednesday, probably Wednesday evening, when it was all completed. Right now, you're still, there's still a budget deficit of about $575,000. And that doesn't include any discussions that you just had prior to this agenda item. I'm happy to review it in detail if you wish, and we're happy to have a discussion with you as far as where you think we are in revenues, whether you think they're going to be stronger than what we originally anticipated. I'll tell you that, and I think I mentioned this once before, my counterpart in Yarmouth had a S&amp;P rating call. They had originally reduced their local receipts by 15%, which is about where you are now. And S&amp;P strongly suggested that they reduce those further, the further, those local receipts further to 30% reduction. We're not there, we haven't taken that route yet, but that's certainly up to the board of your pleasure.
Yeah, 30% is tough, since we, I don't see us, I know S&amp;P rating's important, but I don't see us going 30% in this environment, Carol. But we can, we can discuss that. So we are where we are, but I guess what we need to do now, Carol, is our job as selectmen is go through the town warrant and see if those that we want to further delay in terms of the budget or limit for this time. I will comment that regardless. Appreciate your work on this, and all the department heads, and all the departments working really hard, understanding the fix we're in, in terms of the budget. So we'll probably need to repeat that statement, and Joe helping out as well. But we, I'm sure as a board, we're gonna repeat that statement every day as we go forward, because we couldn't do, we couldn't even have a discussion if it weren't for everyone trying to work together and see what, what happens next. So thank you, and thanks to all. With that, Michael, you have.
Yeah, Carol, can you tell me in this budget, what percentage of the stabilization is being proposed to be used right now or none?
I have not proposed to use your stabilization because I really thought that it would be the board to make that kind of decision.
Okay, that's one. Number two, does anyone have a number from Montemoy Regional School of what's in their excess and deficiency funds still and what they're proposing to use?
I don't have the full report. I mean, I can tell you that I can, I've downloaded the FY19 E&amp;D report, and, but I can certainly reach out to Montemoy and just get all the finer details. That should probably just come straight from them.
Okay, Michael?
So I'd like to request that. If we could get that, that'd be great. I'd like to understand what they're putting in. The other item on the school that I'd like to understand is, originally in our budget, we had a $260,000 capital expense for the school. Is that, I know Don spoke of it, spoke of it last time. I'd like to understand, are they, are we still expected to pay on top of their budget the $260,000 in capital?
The two, the capital item is still in the draft warrant, correct.
Okay, so their budget's up 1.2%, ours is down 1.2%, and we're still paying the $260,000.
What's the two, what's that for, do you recall?
Elementary school something.
We would have to get a list of all of their capital items for you, and I can request that as well.
That'd be good, yeah, thank you, because that might be something we can seriously look at.
So as it stands, without anything we've talked about, we're at a $574,000 deficit.
That's correct.
Okay. And I imagine at some point, we're gonna get a conversation with our subcommittee and the Finance Committee as to what they're thinking, they're gonna, how they're gonna deal with this.
That's a, I'm taking it over from Michael now. Dana, that direction, you're the one committee member on there right now. What's, where do you guys stand on this?
Well, we just got these figures new, as, as you did. It's a step in the right direction. I had the same kind of questions about the schools. I also saw that, Carol, in, in your proposal, you have reduced by $150,000 the amount of free cash you had in the budget. Is that from changes on our side, so the school number is still the same?
So that change was a result of funding sewer. The sewer budget had been reduced, as, I think as you're aware of, of about $100,000, I believe. In addition to that, the proposal is coming forward from Wastewater Committee to fund the remainder of that budget with their retained earnings.
Okay, so under the, under that line, that article in the budget, that's not gonna come from raising appropriate or anything like that? That's gonna, or free cash, the $200,000?
So there's still, hold on, I just need to pull the page up for you. So there's still $200,000 that's being raised for the purpose of sewer, of which a portion of that, $100,000 of that is being funded from free cash.
Okay, and the other $100,000's coming from raising appropriate?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I know the subcommittee, hopefully we can meet later in the week. The Finance Committee's meeting Friday. It's kind of our last chance before things go to print. I know I have some ideas that I'm going to propose to the Finance Committee about reductions that we could possibly make, but it doesn't make half a million dollars, that's for sure. There's still going to be some work that we're going to have to do. And right now, my optimistic view is that some of the receipts could, could nose up, depending on how we close out July and how we close out August. We'll have those numbers, hopefully, before we go into our town meeting. But that's, to me, the last hope before you do consider using something from our reserves. I know the schools ended up being over their total projected amount of 5% that they're allowed by law to close out their books. I don't know how they're using that $2 million that they have, but certainly, we're going to be expecting them to chip in portions of that. We're trying to use reserves everywhere we can, but that's, that's, to me, is the last, the last straw, and it's after everything else has been exhausted. You're right, the department heads are stepping up. Everybody's doing what they can, but ultimately, we got to make it all fit.
I have one comment regarding the, for Joe and Carol, is that, you know, part of the money is, is to work with the wastewater, add the wastewater activities into the Water and Wastewater Department. And I'm wondering how much of that can be delayed, possibly a year, because, you know, that's not all coming on at one time, so I'm not sure what we have to reduce some of those, some of that funding in terms of, you know, maintaining their operation. Joe and Michael, but...
Well, I, frankly, I think that's compromised by the election result of June 30th, whereby we now effectively have a Water and Wastewater Commission, where the adoption of that goes into effect immediately. The charter provision, as I recall it, is related to the CWMP.
Right.
So any discussions on their budget would be through that commission.
No, I understand that. It's fulfilling. I'm just wondering how much of that we have to step up to the plate right now versus a year from now. Now, what's their, what would be the activity required to pull that into the, into their full?
You're saying to get it fully functional?
Right.
I can follow up with Dana.
Michael?
Yeah, and I think that that warrants a conversation with the Water Commissioners, as of now, Water Commissioners. And if memory serves me correct, that was a, that was based on a 600 home flow, which now we've reduced that to a 400 home flow, and if the, if the estimates are correct for first year, we're going to have about a dozen people on it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I know there's spending time on it, but I'd go back and see what the actual activity they expect. Is there something?
Understood.
They could go back. Michael?
So then, to further the conversation, and I also appreciate all the department heads stepping up, and I think that we're going to get into this 2021 budget just fine, you know, if we, if we can recognize some of the schools' money and get them to chip in more out of their E&amp;D, if that number is true. Where do we go from here? And I think, Larry, you've asked for it in the past, not from this administrator, but the past administrator, an org chart, and operationally, where we stand and what we should be looking at. So tonight, we're talking about adding another position. I think we, as a Board, really need to take a close look at what we have in town, what we need in town, and maybe it's everything that we have, but maybe it's not, because I think 2022 is our challenge.
And to that point, Michael, Jill and I have talked about that, and I know Jill's working on the, over the age, so I never got it before. I'm hoping I get it now.
Thank you.
Ed, and then, Joe, do you want to speak first?
Well, actually, I was hoping to speak last on the budget, but I'll...
Well, you can speak last, and I'll let Ed go first.
I'd like to hear his comments.
I was just going to add to the, I was going to add to the chorus of voices that recognize the efforts of our department heads, obviously, the stellar efforts of our Finance Director. You know, when Carol talked about it, when Carol and I have the conversations, there's a number of different ways that she's approached this. You heard her conversations with both the Golf Director and the Harbor Master, looking at retained receipts, talking about article balances from years past, a really stepped-up effort on that. And to the point about fiscal year '21 versus '22, you know, there's been a conscious decision to try and make sure that we can take steps that will augment, hopefully, free cash. We've seen the benefit of what we were able to do, the fiscal discipline we had in fiscal year '20, that we hope to have impact upon free cash certification, and the same effort that we're trying to do for fiscal year '22. And so there's been a lot of fiscal discipline. There's been a lot of efforts by everybody through Carol's leadership on the finance side, and really, I think everybody is focused, so that when we get into town meeting in September, I know that I'll be talking about all the various measures that everybody's tried to come to bear on this budget. There's been a full court press, so to speak, and we're not done.
Yeah.
But I did want to add to that chorus to thank the department heads and our Finance Director.
Yeah. I don't know where you are, Carol, on finance, since the revenues, the information changes daily, it seems. Either we talk about the pandemic regulations changing or finance, but where we are now, I think, Michael, you started this discussion, we, is that in the end, we're going to have to postpone some warrant articles to balance the budget. And so that's where we are, that's where we're going next, isn't it? With the information that, Carol, you've given us, we're, I think we're close to getting the tools we want. We asked questions for the schools, and we have for reserve funds, but we'll start next on the chore of going through the warrant. Ed?
Well, I think, you know, you say that next is to look at the warrant articles and maybe postpone some of them, and most of the warrant articles are things that potentially we can postpone. I know there has been, and rightly so, a reticence to just turning to the stabilization fund to balance out our budget. But I think, you know, what we shouldn't always forget, you know, we have a collection of town services that we have built up over the years, because folks in town feel those services are important. And at this point, if we get down to a point where we still are running a deficit, where the only way to meet that would be to eliminate a town service, we then need to look at whether or not, you know, that town service is really something that is necessary, and we should have always been doing, or we've just been spending money needlessly. And I don't think, you know, looking at the services this town provides, I don't think there is a service that we have that is frivolous, or doesn't serve an important public purpose. And so, you know, the other way of balancing a budget, obviously, is the dreaded override. But the purpose of a stabilization fund is to bring stability to the tax rate, and using it in times like this to carry us over a rough spot in our finances is entirely appropriate. And that's what, in part, you have the stabilization funds for.
I think we would all agree with that. Just, for me personally, I want to use that as a last resort.
Sure, we all, we all try.
And that, and so, yeah, Michael?
Yeah, I agree with you, Larry, and I think that the taxpayers, voters are going to say that, whether they approve Article IV or not.
Yep.
But I mean, my, my idea of an org chart really isn't to, it is for us to take a fresh look at.
Oh, yeah.
How everything is going, how everything is running, what's needed and what may not be needed. If I could just, one more thing, Larry?
Sure.
Can we at some point get an update on Bank Street Firehouse, was voted a couple of years ago, for us to be able to dispose of that building? Can we, can we just look at where we're at with that?
Jill, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. I know...
Yep, I can revive the committee that I was working on, working with on that one and provide an...
Unfortunately, Michael, we bring that up, and then something draws our attention away from it, but it's been dragging on too long. Okay, so, you know, Carol, I think we're getting to a point where we have a budget, thanks to your work and FinCom and stuff, that we, the next couple meetings, we're going to have to start going through the warrant and matching it to the budget. So we will, we'll do...
Work to come.
Right, yeah, we still have some questions on schools and some other things, but we're getting close, so we're, we're going to have to start making some decisions. And Dana, thanks though from FinCom and your subcommittee. Will, the subcommittee, you're, when will you plan to report back to us?
I'm hoping that we would meet sometime this week. Joe was, and I was supposed to figure that out exactly when we'd meet, but I'm hoping that we could post something tomorrow and meet potentially Friday at 5:00 or sooner, if we could.
Yeah, because just to reiterate, you know, you're working with Carol and everyone and Joe, so I'm hoping you come back with some recommendations to help guide us in our discussions going forward.
Yeah, I know the Finance Committee is voting away. I know we voted some 30, 30 articles so far, based on the draft warrant. But again, everything is so tentative right now, it, it, we really need to get down to the last final brass tacks.
Okay, Michael?
Dana, can you send the, your votes so far to the Board, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, no discussion, we'll move on next to, next time on the agenda. Michael?
I move that we vote to accept the date, time, and location of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, September 26, 2020, 10:00 a.m., Monomoy Regional High School, Stadium Field, 75 Oak Street, with a rain date of September 27, 2020, 1:00 p.m., Monomoy Regional High School, Stadium Field, 75 Oak Street.
Second.
So Joe, there you have it. We're, we voted on this. We'll be ready to move ahead. Any comments?
Just that staff is working on the logistics, and I'll have a, an update on logistics next week.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Steve? I think Steve is gone for the, for the evening. What's next on the agenda is the...
Community preservation.
We start going through the CPC articles. Michael?
I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant the following articles. Number one, appropriate sums of money from the FY 2021 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Act funds. Two, fund the land bank debt services. Three, community preservation activities under $50,000. Four, Pine Grove Cemetery gravestone construct, conservation and preservation. Five, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust. Six, rental assistance program. Seven, White House Field lighting project. Eight, Brooks Park fencing project. And nine, Harwich Community Playground project.
Your second?
Second.
Joe?
I was just going to ask if we could, just for sake of clarity, so those are not article numbers, so that if the motion could also identify as found on pages 20 through 24 on the...
Draft article.
Third version of the warrant.
Okay, you accept that?
Yes, thank you.
Ed, you're, okay, thank you, Joe. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Ed?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Michael?
I'm an aye.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Larry, I'm, I'm here. Aye.
I, I'm Steve. I, I can't tell whether, but thanks for, for voting on that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. For some reason, I just kept getting cut out, so I apologize to everybody, but I'm an aye.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Michael?
And, and just for public knowledge, these are all articles from the Community Preservation Committee, or forwarded by the Community Preservation Committee with the CPA, Community Preservation Act funds.
Right, and, and in fact is, we don't have a lot of authority on what they put in the warrant or not. We could, at town meeting, we can vote for or against them, but they're, they're, and in saying that, that committee and Dave Nixon, the Chair, spent a lot of time debating the articles, so I feel comfortable that they've given it a lot of thought. Okay, Ed?
And I think the other important thing about the Community Preservation Act funds are, these are funds that have already been collected. They're in the bank. To not expend them, the funds would just sit there, rather than getting out into the community, providing some level of employment for folks in our community, which is important in these times.
Okay, good. Next on the agenda is Town Minister's Report. Joe?
Two items first, as I tried to say earlier. Very pleased to announce the hiring of the part-time health inspector. Megan Eldridge did, conducted a search, and I met last week with her recommended choice, Jermaine, she goes by Jerry Leonard, and I'm pleased to announce that Jerry has accepted the offer of employment and scheduled to start on August 31st. So able to get that critical position filled to get them back up to speed with that earlier departure. And then the other item, Mr. Chairman, is just the proposed meeting for tomorrow evening, August 18th, at 5:00 p.m., for the Board to continue going through the draft warrant. The version you have tonight is version three. I had version four today, and I might have version five tomorrow. So I'm going to continue on those and get them in front of the Board. And last but not least, related to that, I heard back from John Giorgio, Town Council, on the mechanism that we would use if the Board is so inclined to adopt a consent agenda of articles. And that's a way that could help expedite, you know, getting through, as was stated earlier, the, the meeting in a timely manner, identifying those articles that may not have a lot of discussion, and putting them in consent agenda. So that's going to impact upon some of the article language, as well as the motions. So I'm going to follow up with Council tomorrow and have more tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
That concludes my report.
We do have a final item on the, in the packet, and that is actually under Town Minister's Report, but that's for the, from the Golf Department, monthly update. And I don't think we need to spend time on that, but I would ask, could that be put on our website? Because we have had a lot of questions about the golf course, and I want to make this as visible as we can.
Also, in, I haven't read the report, but I hope it mentions that Quebec Valley was, several weeks ago, was picked to host the statewide junior tournament, which is quite an honor for a public course to be picked.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Roman tells us in his report that he's going to do a separate report dedicated that, to that very fact.
Okay.
Great.
Moving then to Selectmen's Reports. Steve, I'll start with you.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
I'm also good.
Ed?
Fine and dandy.
I retain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.